It is now 6:31. I'm going to call this meeting of the Lawndale City Council to order. I'm going to ask the city clerk to conduct the roll call. Madam City Clerk.
Good evening. Mayor Protem Suarez?
Here.
Councilmember Kearney?
Here.
Councilmember Hoffman-Gorman?
Here.
Councilmember Cuevas?
Here.
Mayor Pollan Miles?
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you. Okay, next, we're going to have Pastor Matthew Harbison lead us in a word of inspiration. Thank you Reverend. And first, I want to have a flag salute from Councilmember Pat Kearney. Thank you, Mr. Kearney. Let's have the pledge of allegiance.
Please stand. Place your right hand over your heart and repeat along with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing.
Gracious God, we thank you for the opportunity to gather here tonight. We thank you that we're able to have elections in this city. We thank you that tomorrow is the day of procrastination and that everyone who's been waiting, this is where it's coming to. And we ask that as we conduct business tonight, that we would be civil and we would be able to be respectful, that we'd be open to hearing the community as well as doing what is best for the community. We thank you for the opportunity to be present, for this building, for these people, and for the electronic technology we have to transport this out to YouTube and other places. And we just look forward to being able to be together as a people in this city. May we do well. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor Harbison for those words of inspiration.
arrived on scene and located the victim, who was subsequently transported to the hospital and listed in stable condition. The deputies canvassed the area and gathered crucial evidence, which ultimately assisted detectives in locating and charging two male adults for the assault. The suspects were not residents of Lawndale. And then moving on to our traffic-related incidents. So on Friday, November 1st, shortly after midnight, deputies responded to 149th Street and Inglewood Avenue regarding reports of a vehicle colliding into a residence. Deputies arrived on scene and saw the vehicle had collided into the exterior portions of the property, including the fence and decorative retaining wall. Enforcement Deputy Morales, along with several other Lawndale deputies, had the opportunity to attend an extensive traffic collision investigation course facilitated by the Sheriff's Department. The course offered instruction regarding evidence collection, scene management.
21, 234 of these calls were EMS-related, and 174 of those required ALS interventions by paramedics. We had seven calls for. End of my report unless there's any further questions.
Okay, thank you for that report. All right, thank you. Assistant Fire Chief. Thank you, sir. All right, very good. Next item on our agenda is communications. This is when you have the opportunity to speak to this body on items that are not on the agenda. If you'd like to do so, we ask that you line up by the flag when it becomes your turn. If you would approach the podium, if you would start with your name first. At about two and a half minutes, the amber light will come on and give you the signal to start wrapping things up. Let's have our first speaker.
Matthew Harbison. I just want to say thank you for putting on the Halloween event, and I appreciate doing something different. Not that the past was anything wrong, but anytime you have someone new come in, you always wonder, is this, is this going to be the same? Is it going to be worse? This was different, and I think the kids that were there had a good time. I had a good time. We were able to have a booth there, and we were passing out stuff. It was just, saw a couple people, same multiple times, just because we had a little Pokemon cards and they kept wanting more. But we had a lot of people coming through, and it's just great to be present with the community, involved in the community, seeing people in the community. And I thank you for being able to be there as well, to be seen by the community. And I just am thankful that the city has time and resources to do that, so that we're not just up here, but we're actually out there too. So I thank you for that opportunity. I also want to say good job to your graffiti crew. I'm calling at least twice, three times a week, and I called at 5 o'clock one day. I just saw them, it was 4:30, and these guys were tagging, in the middle of the day. So I mean, it's no longer a 2:00 AM thing. This is the middle of the day, everybody's doing things, and two or three people. So I thank you for being on top of that and giving us opportunities as citizens to call that in. So thank you for that, as well as the different services you have on your website that we can have access to and we can follow up. I know that sometimes there's some people who aren't Aztec savvy, and so perhaps just making sure they have information from you to continue to respond and correspond, that's just fine as well. And I also wanted to say thank you for your parking enforcement groups. They have not a nice job, but they are out and they do what they need to do. And I've just seen their presence in the community, and people who like to park in the red, I'm not seeing them doing that as much. And I'd like to also commend your patrol that's driving around the, not the police, but the sheriff, but the other department that you have. They're patrolling around. I see them, and they're being present. And so I know they've been places where you've asked them to stay a little longer last time, and I see them there, and they're not just hidden in the shadows, but they're present so everyone knows we're watching out for you. So thank you for that investment. I know the people who I've talked to said they feel a little safer at that time. So again, keep doing what you're doing. I appreciate it, and so do the people that talk to me. So thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi. I'm here to talk about noise. On October 27th, Sunday night, my neighbors decided to have a drunken revelry party as loud as you can. The word that you use, the ordnance, is unreasonable, and it was just so loud. I called the sheriff, and I got an answer, which was curtly told to me that it's 10:30 at night. They can carry on. So I said to the policeman on the phone, no matter how loud they are? Yep, doesn't matter. So we had to grin and bear it, and I don't think anybody here would have liked it. It was outside, and it was just going, people barking like dogs, music's blaring, drunken revelry carrying on, and I couldn't do anything about it. And we closed all the windows, doors, went on and on and on. And the police were like, 10:30? So I looked up the ordinance, and it's 10 o'clock. And the ordinance, the words you used in the ordinance is disturbing the comfort, health, peace, and safety of people. So why is this allowed? So the criteria is 10 o'clock. So why, why can they do this until 10 o'clock at night? As opposed to, it's unreasonable, period. So that's what I'm presenting. Thank you.
Good evening, Lawndale resident. So I got one of your flyers, and I just have a quick question. I know you say you were opposed to the pay raise that everybody agreed to. I was just wondering, as a candidate, did you decline the pay raise? Did you accept it? Or did you give it away to charity? Are you still claiming it? But other than that, I wish everybody good luck tomorrow and on Election Day. Thank you.
Hello.
Good evening.
Yes, sir.
The September 16th, 2024 city council meeting began the most negative and offensive campaigning I have witnessed during my 10 years in attendance here. This was a meeting that began attacking the city manager and his salary. These attacks continued and even appeared in the Mayor Protem's campaign literature. None of this makes sense, as after a comparison study to other city managers' salaries, the city council approved Ms. Morris's salary increase on April 15th. Ms. Suarez did not challenge the amount of the increase, but wanted it paid in increments. If this was outrageous then, why was there not one resident complaining at that April 15th meeting? Raising it 15, five months later, it became a misleading campaign issue, which suggests this is what it was designed to do. I appreciate the campaign flyers from council candidates Hoffman-Gorman, Cuevas, and Mayor Pollan Miles. The positive messages outline achievements they made while serving the city of Lawndale. These council members, along with Councilmember Pat Kearney, all support Mayor Pollan Miles. Unfortunately, the flyers from Councilmembers Suarez do not reflect any achievements, but simply portray a negative depiction of the city. I was particularly insulted by the one that touted how she voted against the city manager's pay raise and the city council pay raise, describing her fellow council members as self-serving city hall politician. This flyer begs comparison to the corruption of the city of Bell. That, this is not, that is not how Lawndale is. And again, as someone asked, if after Ms. Suarez voted against the salary increase, did she decline that increase? The true and false flyer comparing Ms. Suarez to Mayor Pollan Miles was an amateur and unprofessional piece of work. One of your biggest contributions to the city was allowing chickens. The mayor's vote was the third vote that allowed your item to be passed. During city council meetings, he has been professional and respectful to you. This attack against him was really unnecessary and shows a bit of a lack of professional character as a public official. As a council member, Ms. Suarez has a four-year term and one vote. If elected, may I should we serve only a two-year term and still have only one vote? As a council member, there was the opportunity to place items on the agenda and vote on any items presented. What does one gain by becoming mayor that one could not as a council member, which justifies the negativity injected into the campaign? With all the negative campaigning against the mayor and the whole council, what type of support do you think you will receive? If Ms. Suarez should win the election for mayor, this would cause further disruption by creating a vacancy on the council. How would, how would she recommend filling that vacancy? She was originally appointed and not elected. This disenfranchisement has occurred too often to be acceptable. Lawndaleans do not have someone, do not want someone sitting in seats for the next two years that will not represent their interests or who they do not trust. If elected, will she commit to fill any vacancy through a proper election process? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Hello, I'm Annette Owens, and I'm a Lawndale homeowner that lives near the train tracks in the right-of-way between Inglewood and Condon Avenue. I'm here to personally thank Mayor Pollan Miles and Rhonda Hoffman-Gorman for their support and advocacy against Metro's planned trains down the tiny strip of tree-lined green space known as the row. That's the grassy area between Condon and Gravilia, which the residents of southwest Lawndale treasure as one of the very, the very few easily accessible green spaces in our neighborhood. Due to the disrespectful way that Metro has pretended to listen to us, and yet still carry on with plans to destroy our peaceful neighborhood rather than build the new rail down, elevate it down the center of Hawthorne Boulevard, which is where the historic Redline Trolley was built years ago, the residents of southwest Lawndale are now, many of us, one-issue voters. We have found out that Metro simply can't be trusted to be honest and transparent, or even communicate effectively with us. They likely knew long ago that Caltrans wanted to expand the freeway near Manhattan Beach in Lawndale, and were just too cheap and lazy to do what is right by the thousands of residents who would be forced to live within only a few feet of three rail tracks in Lawndale and North Redondo. So since this is a season for voting, and if fighting Metro's terrible plans to disadvantage our community by plowing a metro train, two trains, two additional train tracks, and moving the existing train closer to homes, if that's important to you, you should keep in mind that the following people have proven that they are in it for the fight. Mayor Robert Pollan Miles, Rhonda Hoffman-Gorman, and running for state senate, Michelle Chambers. They all came out in solidarity with us to stand up for our city at last May's big metro meeting downtown, when they were voting on how to proceed. Others who have clearly, clearly been doing the hard work of being engaged and present to support the community in many aspects and areas of Lawndale are the city manager, who was also with us that May, that May meeting, and the current incumbent El Camino College Board of Trustee member, Catherine Mashler, who is a longtime resident, resident of Lawndale and retired, a retired El Camino College employee. I'm also sad to see the tension and divisiveness that is apparent in this council. As a longtime resident, I wanted to stop. I don't know what's going on, but as a lifelong educator, I looked up what average salaries are for city council members, mayors, and city managers. Trust and believe that these folks are well under the regional average. No one's getting rich here. And the increase in pay they recently received should be viewed as more of a correction. They still don't get paid parity compared to other districts that are near us, other cities that are near us. It still doesn't get to parity, but any city council person who voted against the increased pay might want to find a way to donate the balance to a good cause. Please remember to vote if you haven't already. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, with that, we'll close public comments and bring it up to the diocesan. Any comments from the council, if any? Let's start with Cuevas. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for coming and speaking or watching us over YouTube.
Oh, okay. Councilmember Hoffman-Gorman.
Thank you to everybody that came and took the time this evening to speak to us on your own issues, and I appreciate that, and I will give it to the guy on my right.
Mr. Pat Kearney.
I want to thank everybody that came out and spoke tonight. It's on. Matthew, thank you for the compliment on Halloween haunt. It was well-attended. The scary house or the haunted house was the best out there. You can ask our HR director. She was petrified. And on Hector's issue about the Halloween party, Michael, can you address that? Can, you talked to him, it counts southwest also?
Mayor, council, I had the sheriffs reach out to the resident right now. Mr. Reyes can coordinate with.
Can southwest reach out to do the same thing?
Southwest is not in law enforcement. We would have to send law enforcement or code enforcement out there.
With that, I'll close and pass it on to the mayor.
Hi, I'd like to thank everybody that came out tonight. I think what I want to say is I'm glad that each and every one of you is taking this election seriously, and I do hope that you exercise your right to vote. With that, I'll pass it along.
Thank you. Yeah, Pastor Harbison, yeah, thank you for recognizing our graffiti crew, and the staff and volunteers who put on a wonderful Halloween display. Yeah, it was a little, a little different, and it was really, really nice. And that is, that haunted house? Brought the haunted house back, rave reviews. I want to thank the staff for that haunted house. I got the chance, of course, to see it, you know, the pre, before it was really haunted. And then once they brought in the ghosts and goblins, it became, you know, really, really haunted, right? And everyone just had a, had a good time. So thank you, Pastor, for recognizing their hard work of our staff in the new format, the graffiti, and also the private, private security. You mentioned the private security. I was on Hawthorne Boulevard just about maybe 10, 10:30, and they were posted up by one of the, one of the shops, and really made a difference. I'm posting, it was like 10, 10, 10:30. Like, oh, okay, I wasn't sure they were out there that late. So I want to thank you for noticing the work that, that they do there. And also, I just want to thank all those who had the opportunity to speak, speak their minds about the issues confronting the city of Lawndale, whether it's the Sea Line Project or the elections that's coming up, what have you. But thank you for your voice and for putting your voice in, because here in the city of Lawndale, of course, we're all about making sure everyone's voice is heard, right? And I just want to thank you for taking that opportunity, and thank you for being here tonight. And with that, I will close my comments, and we will move our agenda to the consent calendar.
Oh, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, City Clerk, we will have an announcement.
Do that at this time? Okay, let's hear from Madam City Clerk. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council members. This is a friendly reminder for all of us that tomorrow, Tuesday, November 5th, is Election Day. If you would like to vote in person, you may visit Jane Adams Middle School from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, located at 4535 West 153rd Place in Lawndale. Please note that the vote center is located in the gymnasium off of Firmona Avenue. You may also drop off your ballot at the 24-hour secure ballot drop-off box located at Hogan Park, 16605 Osage Avenue in Lawndale, from now until 8:00 PM tomorrow, Tuesday, November 5th. For further information, please visit, visit the county register's website at lavote.gov, or you can contact my department at 310-973-3213. That concludes my announcement. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Let me go back to the city manager. I do have a question I forgot to address concerning the noise ordinance. I remember back, at least some time ago, we had an ordinance whereby if the, if code enforcement, sheriffs, or what have you, have to address a loud noise, parties, anything that has to do with, you know, what it was called? If they have, if they go a certain amount of time, then they could be ticketed for a nuisance, what have you. You have any information on that? I think it had to be like three times, whether it's a loud party or some type of disturbance.
Mr. Mayor, council, I can look into that. I do recall seeing something in the ordinance. I can get back to you and report back. We'll look into that, but we definitely, Justin's already, Sergeant Smith's reached out to the resident, and then we'll have Mr. Reyes follow up and see what we can do, if we can look at some citations and whatnot, based on the information we received at the Sheriff's Department.
Yeah, because that would be good to know. Actually, I got a call from someone that I was talking to, and she was experiencing similar, wasn't a party, but just ruckus, you know, you know, all day. Actually, it was music that was coming back to me, with someone that's playing their music loud all day, every day, you know? And it reminded me that back in the days, we used to have an ordinance of some sort that required, well, allowed a person to be cited for some type of a nuisance if they're visited by code enforcement or law enforcement a certain amount of time within a certain duration. So if we can look at that, maybe that'll help.
We'll definitely do that, Mayor and council.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to bring that.
May I pay you back on Madam City Clerk? If you go to Jane Adams during the daytime, you have to park on the street. There's no parking available in their lot. But after tomorrow, it's tomorrow, Wednesday, after 3:30, you can park on the lot. Otherwise, you have to park in the street to vote, to come in to vote.
You mean after Tuesday?
Yeah.
Okay.
If you come during school time, you have to park on the street.
Okay.
Very good.
All righty, with that, we move our agenda. We're now on the consent calendar. What is the pleasure of this body concerning consent calendar?
If there's no subtraction additions, I'll make a motion to go with stacking addition.
Okay, motion's been made that we approve the consent calendar as is.
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion made by Kearney and seconded by Cuevas. Any discussion on the motion? CNN, would the clerk please conduct the vote?
For the consent calendar, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Next item on the agenda under administration, item six, city council meetings for the calendar 2025. Let's have the staff report.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Yvette Palomo, Assistant City Clerk. Staff has reviewed the 2025 calendar of city council meeting dates and is requesting the city council's consideration to cancel three of the meetings due to city-observed city holidays. Those three meetings are on Monday, January 20th, 2025, Martin Luther King Jr. Day, Monday, February 17th, 2025, President's Day, and Monday, September 1st, 2025, Labor Day. Staff is recommending that the city council cancel these three meeting, meeting dates and reschedule to, reschedule them to the next day on Tuesday, or provide staff with other direction. Thank you.
Okay. Any discussion on this, thank you for that report. Any discussion on this item?
Yeah, I have a question. So September is so far out, how do we know that we won't need it? That's just my question.
Oh, the second one, September 2nd.
The last date. Yeah, I mean, that's more than nine months.
Staff has looked at the calendar for items that occur during September every year. There isn't anything that is pressing at this time, but if there is something that comes up, we can always schedule a special city council meeting.
On that regular day, on that day, September 2nd, okay. On that regular day, on that day, September 2nd, okay. Okay. Any other questions or concerns? I guess I should look at this new system we have here. Let's hear from Cuevas.
At this time, I was thinking if we could move it to the Tuesday, the following Tuesday, and especially for the ones in February 17th and September 1st. And if there's nothing in the calendar after the first of the year, then we could always cancel it. But I think we should move it to the first Tuesday instead of the, since we're skipping Monday.
Is that the day, instead of the day after?
It would be the day after. Tuesday, February 18th, and Tuesday, September 2nd. And if, and if we get closer to September 2nd and we see that there's nothing there, we could always cancel it.
I'm fine with that.
I'd just see all three of them, schedule the next day. We can always cancel them. Here with the January 20th.
You mean the next, that Tuesday instead of that?
January 21st.
It works either way for me.
I'd like to see all three of them scheduled the following day.
Is that what you're saying? That's not saying like that's what you're saying too?
I skipped the January, but February, you know, all three is fine.
All right, well, let's do that. If that's, if that's okay with the council, we can do it under anonymous consent. You need to vote on it.
Okay, so yes, that would be the recommendation. It'd be staff's second recommendation, which is to reschedule them all to the next days. And then, based on what we've heard, we'll bring back if, you know, perhaps the meeting before, so January 6th, February 3rd, or August 18th. If it looks like we're going to have clean calendars, we can bring them back at that time.
Okay, so that would, that would be the order, without objection? All righty, thank you. Next item.
So do we have to vote on this, or?
No, we can do it in anonymous consent.
Okay.
Next item is our quarterly investment report for the quarter ending September 30th. Let's have the staff report.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and council members. So here we have, excuse me, investment report for first quarter of 2425 fiscal year, ending September 30, 2024. So just to go over some numbers real quick. The city had 61,435,641 in cash and investments, 2.4 million with cash with fiscal agent, 1,015 in petty cash, and 777,000 in two pars retirement accounts. A little bit about interest rates, so we kind of know where we're headed. You may be aware that the Fed finally cut rates 50 basis points back in September, which is half a percentage. And the next meeting is later on this week, and one more in December. And most estimates, most economists and, you know, online tools are pointing at another 25 basis points in the November meeting and another possible 25. So that's another 50, so that would be a whole percentage point this year alone. And then, obviously, there's going to be more meetings next year, but that's further down the road. So we are looking at lower interest rates coming up. Just to kind of, LEAF as of September 30 was at 5.75, so I mean, that's obviously expected to kind of decrease as well. As far as investments that we have, we have 18 million in cash, 25 million in LEAF, which is about 75% of our portfolio. And these are what's called the uncalled demand assets, which are very liquid. Next, we have the short-term investments. We have basically 18 CDs or 4.3 million. This makes up about seven and a half percent of the whole portfolio. These are returning an average of 4.6% right now. And then in the midterm, we have one, the one to three years. We have 21 CDs, which is 5,99,000. And we also have two bonds at 2 million. The CDs are averaging 4%. The bonds are, one is at 5.5, and one is at 5%. The one that 5.5 was recently called in October, that's kind of as expected, because it was a very high rate that we were, yield that we were getting on that one. So that has been replaced with another million-dollar bond, which is a five-year, sort of going to the long-term bucket, and that's at a 4.2% yield. So as you can see, rates are coming down. We're not getting the fives or five and a halves anymore. And then long-term, three to five years, we currently just have one CD for 248,000, making 4.75%. And then three bonds in there as well, averaging between like 5 and 5.5%. Those will, depending, some of them have longer protections, but I think within the next six months, one or two of them will be called. So they will need to be replaced, and current rates right now are, you know, depending on the timeline and the period that we get into, about 4.2 to 4.5, maybe 4.6%. So rates are definitely coming down. And if they cut them some more in the coming months, it'll obviously affect that as well. But overall, we're in pretty good shape. You know, total CDs and bonds, we have a little over, we have almost 15 million in there. Overall, we're doing fairly well as far as our cash balances and everything, so we're able to cover all costs and expenses. And that concludes my report. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you for that report. Ms. Cuevas?
One quick question on the long-term investments on the bonds.
Yes.
Let's say we, we do the 4.75. It's fixed, so for that period of time, it'll stay at that amount? Even if it drops another percentage? Or are we going to go down?
So when you buy the bond, it's fixed at the rate that they're offering? So it's fixed at that rate?
It's fixed for the five years.
The thing is, some of these can be called before that five years. Some of them have, depending, you know, they can have a various amount of call protections. I try to get some of them that are longer call protections, 24 or 36 months. But obviously, to get that longer protection, you give up some percentage points.
Okay, thank you.
I have a quick question. So when the, the rates go down, the rates are starting to lower, what do we do with that? Do we reinvest it? Is that like a savings, and then we reinvest it, or? How does that manifest itself in terms of the financial health?
So when the rates go down, that doesn't affect us right away, because everything we have is locked in for the time periods that we have them locked in. It's when those CDs or bonds mature and the principal comes back to us, then at that point, we reinvest. And obviously, when we reinvest, it's at a lower rate than whatever just matured.
Got it, got it.
So yes, I mean, the, you know, we still have the same principal, it's just less of an interest return on our money.
Okay, got it, got it. Thank you. Okay, any discussions on this item? What's the pleasure of the body concerning the quarterly investment report? Okay, I think we might have to have a motion on this one. So Mr. Pat Kearney made a motion that we receive and file.
I do.
Yes. I get a second on that?
I'll second that.
I have a second, the motion to receive and file, the quarterly investment report. Madam City, any discussion on the motion? CNN, Madam City Clerk, would you conduct the vote, please?
For item number seven, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. All right, let's see. Okay, number eight, authorization to allow residents to bid on city-used furniture. All right, let's, you going to get the staff report?